Right. Good evening and welcome to the November first, two thousand and twenty-two city council special meeting. I am Mayor Ross. And tonight's special meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. And tonight we welcome Dean Dean, our new city clerk, and she will call the roll.
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway. Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Lusay. Councilmember Christiansen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I am here. Customers, we haven't heard from customer Holloway or customer Lusay have a feeling of probably be here soon. Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew.
Move to excuse Councilmember Holloway and Councilmember Lusay.
Councilmember Holloway.
I don't want to excuse Lusay.
That's where I say has arrived. So there's a motion to then excuse Councilor Holloway. Their second.
I'll second that one.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew and second by Councilor Johnson to excuse Councilor Holloway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? So motion passes and Councilor Holloway is excused. As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. We now move to our first item of special business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve this special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew and second by Councilmember Christiansen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? So motion passes unanimously and the special meeting agenda is approved. So tonight's agenda item is AB twenty-two dash zero seven six, the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four biannual budget. This is an opportunity for council to continue to deliberate on the proposed biennial budget. The order of topics tonight will include introduction from the administration, along with a summary of changes to the biennial budget since the last update. An executive session and the rest of the meeting will be devoted to council discussion of the biennial budget. With that, it will turn over to Budget Manager Drew Boute for his introductory presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, Council. It's great to be here tonight. Happy Halloween. If I missed you, trick or treat. Hopefully it was a fun evening yesterday for everyone. I know things were hopping here on the weekend, and so it's great to see, especially after the pandemic, that we can get back to some of this stuff. Tonight, as the mayor discussed, we're going to discuss the biennial budget. I'm going to provide you with a presentation and then we're going to follow that up with an executive session. And then we're going to turn over the discussion to you, Council. The goal today is to kind of maybe get a sense, but have you really kind of deliberate between yourselves about what you want to see with this biennial budget? What would you like to add to it and what would you like to subtract from it too? But before that, I want to thank you and I want to thank staff as well for the diligence and care and support that has been demonstrated so far in this budget process itself. And so from all of us here in the finance department, we do appreciate that. So with that said, I'm going to go on to the first slide here, just to give you with the hit you with a brief introduction. We released the mayor's proposed two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennial budget to council on September the twelfth. Since that time, during the week of October the third and October the seventeenth, directors presented brief reviews of their department budgets to respective committees. In addition, in between those two committee rounds, we've also had a October the tenth date with council. Where council collectively discussed the budget during a budget workshop. Really, now at this stage, the budget is in council's hands. The administration is no longer really making any more updates to the biennial budget. And so the question we want to ask you is what does council want to see changed to the proposed budget moving forward? Now, we want to discuss a little bit the updates to the budget. This is our third update to the budget book itself. There's a lot of materials in here. We have incorporated into the appendices a lot of what you have reviewed at the committee rounds recently, including the department presentations. We've also incorporated the CIP as a part of the material and the financial management policies, which will be up for adoption at the next council meeting. In addition to that, we have basically four updates to this budget book. The first one is the police car take home program. The police car take home program that we've incorporated into the budget has been updated to reflect the proposal submitted to the city of North Bend. City of North Bend requested a proposal that would phase in the program over time. Instead of purchasing upwards of six vehicles in the first year, two thousand and twenty-three, they wanted to see the purchase of those six vehicles over a four-year period. For the first two years of the biennium, there what we've submitted to the city north end is basically the purchase of two police vehicles and then the four police vehicle, other police vehicles would be purchased in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. The impact to this, it's not only just the North Bend Police Services Fund, but also the general fund as well. Primarily because we would delay the hiring of a mechanic to until two thousand and twenty-four. Consequently, we have reduced the appropriation required for this in the general fund by about sixty-two thousand dollars. In addition to the amount that we've reduced the appropriation for the North Bend Police Services Fund as well, which you can see here in two thousand and twenty-three, roughly four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and in two thousand and twenty-four, because they're going to purchase a vehicle in that year, it actually increased by seventy-three thousand dollars. In addition, one of the major updates to this budget book is for human services funding. Staff was prepared at the last council meeting to provide council with an agenda bill to approve human services funding for the next two-year period. Unfortunately, we weren't able to actually address that with council of that time period. Guys had a lot on your plates on that day, and we hope to bring that forward to the next meeting in November. But what we've done as a part of the budget book is we've updated it to reflect the proposal from the community service committee to increase human services funding. This is roughly thirty-six thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-three and thirty-eight thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four. Furthermore, we have also taken a look at the fire engine replacement. I think we've received a couple of quotes back, basically, and so we've updated to better reflect the cost to replace the city's two thousand and twenty, or sorry, not two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and three fire engine, which we have now budgeted at nine hundred thousand dollars. This is roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase about the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand we had budgeted initially. And lastly, as a part of this budget document, and what is actually common in other cities is we've set aside dollars in a council contingency. This council contingency provides council with the appropriation necessary to handle events or situations that may be unforeseen at the time of budget adoption. We know that there's going to be multiple collective bargaining agreements coming forward eventually in the future. Plus, there could be some other potential events or things that you may want to consider over time. I think probably the best phrase to use in this is kind of a lockbox. I know, and that's probably. Yes, exactly. I was thinking Val Gore when I said that. Probably dates me a little bit as well, which, you know, fantastic. But in essence, it provides council with potentially the authority that you need for anything that may come along. And as a part of this, we will include a proviso within the budget ordinance that limits administrations access to the contingency. So we would have to come back to you to request the availability or to use that appropriation as we proceed forward. In two thousand and twenty-three, this is roughly hundreds, twenty-seven thousand dollars and two thousand and twenty-four, roughly hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars as well. So in total, about two hundred and fifty thousand. All right. Just to provide a little summary of the biennial budget right now, as it stands. The biennial budget that we're presenting here from the administration, the goal of this is to the biennial budget. The goal of the biennial budget is to adapt to a changing financial reality while restoring levels of service since the public health emergency. We're adapting to a changing financial reality because both the public as well as the city has really had to contend with inflationary, a lot of inflationary pressures over time, or at least over the past eight months, and we're certainly seeing that here within the city itself. But in addition to that, we have had significant turnover at the city as well. And so it's been important for us to try to provide support where necessary so that we can maintain the levels of service in this community moving forward. Consequently, this budget is a is equal to a nine point seven percent increase in total planned operating expenditures over and above the current two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two biennial budget. And as a part of this biennial budget, we have a, we have been focused on important council priorities overall. That includes like protecting our public safety, for example, making sure that we're funding that adequately as we proceed forward. Making sure that we're investing in utilities and our infrastructure and sustainably doing that over time so that we can protect the levels of service that we can provide through that. Next, I just want to address some of the major changes and additions within the budget book itself. That you see here, these are things that we have incorporated above and beyond the base level of support that we provided the departments initially. Everything that you see that has a lot in there have been here is generally tied to these items that you see on this list. Includes things like the revenue manager, a budget analyst, temporary assistance during the ERP project, additional ERP project modules, contract legal support, administrative sergeant position reclassed from a detective position, a police car take home program, retention improvement. And there are others such as this. I've got that on the next page. We're actually going to return to this later because this is where we kind of want to get your buy-in to see if you're willing to accept some of this. If you're not, are you prepared to take it out? And so we will be asking those questions of council later. In addition, things like park deferred repairs, parks, open space, recreation study, a right away mower, CD staffing changes, strategic plan, council chambers AV upgrade, security infrastructure at city hall, and additional human services funding. These are all the things that we're putting on the table, wanting your thumbs up, your thumbs down regarding this. There are other funds in addition to the general fund that we have to be aware of. That includes things, funds such as the North Bend Police Services Fund, the non-unilities capital fund and the water operations fund, where there may be additional funding above and beyond or additional operational enhancements or position requests above and beyond the base level of funding for that fund itself or department. In addition, there have been a couple of changes to the stormwater operations fund as well as the equipment replacement and repair fund. And then lastly, the IT fund as well. So with that said, I just want to talk a little bit about the biennial budget ordinance. This is incorporated into the agenda bill that you have. It's a separate exhibit. The biennial budget ordinance translates the work accomplished into legal document ready for council approval. It really sets the appropriation level for the next two-year period. And when we talk about appropriation, what we mean is the legal spending level authorized by a budget ordinance. And the city cannot exceed this level without prior approval of council. So in essence, it's council giving the staff expenditure authority to go out or authority to go spend up to that amount, dollar amount. Our recommendation as part of the administration is to pass the biennial budget ordinance is currently written and without modification. And I just want to get into some important numbers. So hopefully help you reconcile a lot of this that's going on in here. Probably one of the most important tables as part of the budget book is appendices A1, which is financial forecast, working table. So get ready for this. We're going to emphasize using a pulsating box here where we're heartbeat. Yes. What we're going to focus on. So we're going to focus on the top area in appendices A1 right here, basically that describes reoccurring revenues and recurring expenditures. It's really the most important two numbers. Yes.
Jump ahead. Can you, where in this stack of paper can I find that?
Appendix one. It's right in the back.
So it's beyond page, slightly beyond page sixty-six.
Page two.
Page sixty-six, beyond page sixty-six.
If you're flipping through your pages, it's one of the first folded ones. So there should be. It's not a flat.
Financial forecast, working graph, financial forecast. Okay.
Thank you. All right. So we missed the second pulsating box. So I'm going to go back to that.
Sorry to spoil the
Oh, no worries. No.
Is that a new feature?
Happy Halloween. So in essence, the most, two probably most important numbers. And what really describes if we have balanced the budget or not is what you see here. Right now, these two numbers, if you add them up for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, under this row that says revenues over in parentheses, under expenditures, that equals zero. Anything greater than that, zero or greater than that, to us means that we have a balanced budget and we're focused on recurring revenues and recurring expenditures. We have pulled out the one-time expenditures from this table itself. But for staff, in terms of me, the definition as applied within the financial management policy, we believe we have a balanced budget in front of you right now. And so we just want to make sure that that point is clear. Now, I'm also, there's going to be a couple more boxes right here. What you see in terms of total revenues and the total expenditures line within these red boxes up here, what that equates to is this chart right here. So if you were to go look at that row of numbers, you will find that in this chart. I think the chart probably tells a better picture, provides a better picture of what our revenues versus expenditures, recurring revenues versus recurring expenditure looks like over time. You know, consequently, as a part of this budget overall, you're asking to pursue new additional revenue sources through BNO tax audit, a ground emergency medical transport billing to the state healthcare authority, as well as a comprehensive fee study to help bring us back into alignment with our expenditures over time. That's explains the bump that you see here between the two thousand and twenty-three budget and the two thousand and twenty-four budget. That will help to carry us through just a little bit, but our expenditures are eventually going to continue or will exceed our revenues over time. And so we just want to make sure that is clear, and that is something that we have to strategize about as we proceed down the road here. Now, within your financial working forecast table that you have, you'll notice that this table also shows our cash position within the general fund itself over time too. We are not scheduled to drop right now, as of what we presented here, not scheduled to drop to zero within our earning fund balance for the general fund until two thousand and thirty. For which, after that, we will hopefully, our game plan is to make up for that, any sort of shortfalls in those years with reserves that we have. And that is what we're presenting. Yes.
So you're proposing to violate our policies and run six years of deficit spending? And you're just looking at the idea that when will we actually run out of cash? But you're actually proposing six years of deficit spending.
I don't think that's
We just went through with us, what is the definition of deficit? There were pulsing red boxes. And it was revenues.
Well, you're asking if we're in alignment with our policy.
Yeah.
Are we not in alignment with our policy?
That's what I'm asking you.
I believe we're in alignment with our policy.
So running
Budget, which is a two-year budget.
No, no, for the two years, that was the pulsing red box, which was cool, which I agree. But we're saying for the out, the next four years, sorry, the next six years. That will not be the case. We'll run deficits. Yeah, okay. Just want to be clear what you're saying.
Can I ask a question?
Councilmember Benson.
Um, the way I understood what he was saying is this is what we're looking at happening. If we, I thought, I thought what he was telling us is we've got to make some, some decisions. That's what he was saying earlier in the slide project, the slides. Do we still say slides? That we're going to have to make some, some decisions, but that was, that was what I was hearing. I didn't, I didn't hear as an actual proposal to deficit spend for six years.
So we will have to make decisions. I think the administration needs the help of council. We have presented this picture very similar to this for the past, since I've been here for the most part. And from what it just sounded like is that the administration needs to come back with a proposal that actually shows us exceeding our reoccurring expenditures for the full-time period that we have here on this chart.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I'm not asking for that. I was trying to make sure I understood what you were saying. So I think Councilmember Benson, I was trying to eventually through a series of questions, get to what Councilmember Benson got to right away, which is just the point that this spending level that's proposed isn't sustainable even for one more year beyond the budget period. So it's, that's what this seems to show, which means we need to think about not just the idea, and maybe this is where you were going, not just the idea of whether these two years are balanced, but whether we actually have a sustainable budget that can, has some hope of remaining balanced.
I think that's a clarifying statement that is important here because from my interpretation, it was insinuating that the administration is looking to deficit spin. And I don't think the administration has an interest in deficit spinning.
Yeah.
We're in a structural deficit problem that is initiated by the state.
Yep.
Right? So in essence, it's not necessarily us that's causing this. We're largely restricted by the property tax, as you know, and so consequently, this is the picture that we're showing.
Okay, so that, that's, that's a great clarification. That's what I was trying to get at is how should we understand what you're showing us and you just said it, didn't you?
Yes. Okay. I mean, that's, that's basically the story.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. So we showed this table at the October tenth meeting, basically. The point of this is to just kind of make sure that everyone understands what's the money actually that's going to be leaving the door of the city for employee salaries and wages and benefits as well as professional services and so on. It's not, we're proposing a budget that is equal to two hundred and sixty-four point five million dollars. But some of that is money that's being transferred internally. Some of that is money that is being charged between the different departments. We're also proposing the spin roughly sixty-seven point six million dollars on capital expenditures. So roughly our operating budget over the two-year period is really sixty-three million dollars is what we're proposing here. In terms of percentages, that is a nine point seven percent increase above and beyond the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget. But it is equal to a six point six percent increase above the two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty budget, if you're looking for a baseline that does not include the pandemic, or at least for the most part.
Councilmember Benson.
Of that remaining is six point six, how much of that is inflation?
So I mean, a significant component to that is inflation.
But this is, this is increased spending.
This is increased above and beyond the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget.
Good. I mean, we didn't blow it all on hats. I mean, it's, it's from something and and inflation is part of that.
Inflation is a part of that. We're also asking for new positions as well, as well as some of the increases that we've kind of described in slides earlier. Okay. So just to go over a little bit, the biennial budget ordinance table itself, this is what you're going to see as a part of the biennial budget ordinance. Really, I think we've had several questions regarding how does this reconcile back to the CIP? And so I want to address that a little bit. There are two funds here that are critical to the CIP. And I've just got some boxes pulsating a little bit for you. So Fund Three Ten is the non-unilities capital fund and Fund Four Seventeen is the utilities capital fund that you see here highlighted. The top one is the non-unilities capital fund that's highlighted in orange and green is the utilities capital fund, which is highlighted in green here. If I go to the statement, a non-unility CIP sources using in cash balances, which is page thirty-two in the CIP itself, and the CIP is in appendices in there. You're going to see every number within this orange highlighted row here actually included within this statement on non-unility CIP sources uses and cash balances. So in essence, what you see is highlighted here in this table itself in the orange boxes will add up to what you see in that budget ordinance table. I see people looking at the books. Give everyone a moment just to check if they want.
Is that the CIPs in here?
Yes, the CIP is in there. I know it's, we didn't label or number the appendices, which is my fault. So my apologies.
Anything more than ten, I run out of fingers.
Yes, they add up. All right. Got one check on that. And if you want to or head of the game, Councilmember Johnson, page thirty-four is also equal to the utilities capital fund, which is Fund Four Seventeen. So.
I can confirm that. I audited you over the weekend.
Okay, thank you. Are you going to send me a list of everything that doesn't?
No, tied down. Okay, good. I'm actually going to bring up the things that don't tie up.
Okay.
You had an exciting weekend.
Oh.
Us accountants.
All right. So I'm just going to move on to the next one. So the statement of utility CIP sources uses and cash balances, basically the same position as well. The numbers that I have highlighted in these boxes right here should tie out to what you see in the biennial budget ordinance table. Okay. So with that, I'm going to move on to the next slide. Just a couple of important points that we want to make sure that are shared with council, proving the budget does not greenlight capital programs and projects. Council is still going to need to prove contracts, and we want to make sure that that is emphasized. Really, this is just a step along the process for each capital program and project. It's not the finale. Right? So if you happen to approve budget with these projects incorporated into that budget itself, we're still going to have to come back to you to get contract approval. So there are going to be veto points kind of along the way, for the most part, for you to say no to certain projects, programs, you could delay them if you want as well. But really, this is just one step along that process. In addition, the budget charts and organizational and financial path for the next biennium. But we do not need to stay on that path if things change. We know that we're in a very uncertain financial environment right now, economic environment as well. Things may change. There's different exogenous events that could potentially happen that may trigger us or require us to come back to council to have a discussion. So finance will watch trends and report to council. The city shouldn't make any adjustments, and that is our objective, and that is our guarantee to you that we will be back here if something does change. Terms of the next steps on November the seventh, eighth, we're going to return to the committees to continue the review and deliberation to propose two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennial budget. On November the fourteenth, we're going to come back to council, work with you collaboratively to review the final two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennial budget, incorporating some of the changes that you may have here today. We're also going to provide a presentation review of the two thousand and twenty-three property tax levy. The property tax itself is going to be relatively, because we have new council members, be your kind of first go around in that. And so we're going to probably have a large discussion regarding property taxes. In addition, we're going to have two public hearings on November the fourteenth, a revenue sources and property tax public hearing as well as preliminary budget hearing too. And then on November the twenty-eighth, our intention is for council to adopt the final two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennial budget as well as adopt the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty, sorry, two thousand and twenty-three property tax levy. We will need to adopt that two thousand and twenty-three property tax levy at that date because we have to turn it into King County by November the thirtieth. So we'd have a deadline that's fast approaching on that. In addition, we're going to have a public hearing regarding the final budget on November the twenty-eighth. And in terms of what you're going to see from staff moving forward in terms of agenda bills, ordinances and resolutions, we're prepped the two property tax ordinances that we're going to be bringing to you on November the fourteenth. As well as we've got completed as part of your packet tonight, the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennial budget ordinance. Based on what council wants to do, how we're going to craft a two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two biennial budget amendment. There's a lot of proposed fund consolidation going on within this document itself, which means we have to clean up the funds before the start of the new year. And then lastly, staff is going to present to you salaries and benefits for non-represented staff, primarily management and professional. And so with that said, the intention of the administration is to go into executive session.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew.
Yeah, can we go back two slides? So I just, I just want us to think for a moment about November twenty-eighth. Because if we put the public hearing on the same night that we plan to adopt the budget.
I question whether we are signaling a serious intent to listen to the public. So we might want to recon-
So we might want to reconsider the timing of that.
There, there are two public hearings for the budget.
So there is two. We do have the potential at the first meeting in December, right? Could be the adoption of the budget and therefore you can have the public hearing on November the 28th. And then seek adoption of the budget on the 12th, I believe, December.
Mayor Protembe.
Yeah, would just repeat my point. If you have a public hearing on the same night you take an action, I just wonder if we're really allowing time for ourselves to hear from the public. And I, I would also suggest that not only do we allow it, or is there a question about have we allowed ourselves enough time? But also, will the public perceive us to have taken their comments seriously? Even if we do, they may not be able to proceed that. So I think it's just something we should think about.
Councilor Watten.
Can you make the suggestion that we move the public hearing on November 28th to the top of the bulleted list and then place the the adoption of the final biennial budget? And, and replace that with possible adoption of final budget as the third bullet point? And then that will leave us an out that if we decide that we're not ready to adopt it on the 28th, then it rolls over into our December meeting.
Right. So there is one on November 14th.
Right.
Your preliminary budget, right?
That is correct.
Then then again, another probably caring for the same budget, the 28th. And then yes, we can certainly change the wording to possible.
Given, given our past experiences past month, it would be overly optimistic in my view to have numerous speakers on the 28th, but we do not want to preclude those that want to raise issues after hearing the budget presentation on the 14th. So I agree with the mayor pro tem, just out of a pureness of fairness. Appearance of fairness, sorry. I like the word pureness. Make them up. Make that the words.
Councilor Benson.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I like the, I like this solution to leave, leave open the option. If nobody has anything to say, it's, it's easy to deal with on, on the schedule. If people have something to say, you know, it's hard to address everything that everybody says thoughtfully if there's a lot of people with opinions.
Councilor Johnson, and then Councilor Lese.
I just want to mention that in, with regard to recent things that the council considered quite heavily, we had some public comment on the evening which we adopted something and we did amend what it was we were adopting that night in part as a result of those comments we received. So it's not like we can't hear public comment and make amends.
Councilor Lese.
Yeah, I like the idea of having some flexibility there. I definitely want to, you know, I think hearing from the public on the 14th is great on a preliminary budget that may spark some modifications and, but I do think it's critical to have their, their input also on the 28th and then have the opportunity if something else needs to be modified. For me, it's also about notification. It's about making sure the public knows that this is the schedule, that it's out early, that it's not a three days prior and people have to struggle to figure out where appendix A is. I don't want, I don't want that to be the case. I'd like to have folks have a chance to really look at it in detail. And I know it's on the agenda, you know, this is on the agenda tonight, and there's a link to get to see what's on the agenda. But I think as we go through this clearly over the next, you know, three meetings, having, having that flexibility is important.
And the notice has already gone out and so, and we will make sure that the, that's also located on the website and public PRs through Dana, but, but it's already been sent to the paper and all the other requirements.
Well, I think, Mayor, if I may continue. I think it's more than just sending it to the paper. I mean, I know that's our legal obligation. I know that's what we, we do. But I think having it on, on Facebook and the website and we have a Twitter account too, I believe, if I remember right. Notifying folks that these are the times at which they can come in and speak to it well in advance. So they have time to look at it because it's a pretty, it's a pretty heavy document. This is not, this is not a look at an hour beforehand and expect to be able to say something ahead of time. And, and I, I just don't. It's uncomfortable when we're here and then someone, you know, for whatever the reason is, someone says, I didn't have time to, to prepare. I know that's not on us. That's not on them. It's a kind of a shared responsibility to make sure that folks know that something's coming. So I'd be happy to, you know, to do that, to help, you know, help push that out there so folks can hear it too, know that it's coming.
Councilor Christensen.
I was just going to add basically that I'm in agreement with what's being said. I do like having the additional flexibility so that to make sense that we do want to make changes and incorporate them that we can do that. And I, I do agree that, that sending out over social media is really helpful and I'm sure that Dan is on top of that.
Right. So next we're going to go into an executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Oh, yes, Councilor.
I think it's a question for this. I just want to clarify some going back a ways. You started on the next part. I didn't want to interrupt you. So I just want to make sure I understand the reasoning on a balanced budget. That if revenues and expenditures zero out, that that's the, the reasoning behind a balanced budget and you've removed the one-time expenditures. I'm trying to understand how, explain that to me a little bit. If there's another way to explain it, or I can explain to you what I'm thinking. Because I'm not following that reasoning.
So the financial management policy itself, which is also, I've had a season here. I just want to make sure that we can see as kind of five, section 5.4 discusses the balanced budget component. The objective of the operating budget is to pay for all current expenditures with current revenues. So in essence, when we subtract out the one-time expenditures, we're trying to get to a definition of what current expenditures are. Those are ongoing obligations over time that we're trying to meet with our ongoing sources of revenue. The budgets for all cities funds should be structurally balanced through the budget development process. Recurring revenue should equal or exceed recurring expenditures in both the proposed and adopted budgets. What we're proposing is a 2023-2024 budget that is attempting to do that. And so to the point where we're offering it equals zero, when you add those two numbers together, it could be greater than zero. If it's greater than zero, that's fantastic. In essence, that would mean that we have a balanced budget. If it's less than zero, then we're not presenting council and we're out of compliance with the policy that we hope the council will adopt on the 14th.
So Councilor Lese and then.
Thank you. The reason I ask is from a practical standpoint. I have a budget in my household, in my house. That includes paying, paying my rent, paying bills, paying utilities, buying groceries. We'll even say yada, yada, yada. But if I go out and buy a TV set where I go out and repair my roof, or if I go and you know, pick up, decide I'm going to go on a extra vacation, that blows my budget. So I'm not following exactly the logic behind a policy that says recurring revenues are only things that count as balancing the budget when we're clearly going 1.6 million and over one year, but then under 9.990,000. So I'm not following the logic behind how a policy would be structured around not paying attention to those one-time expenditures as well. You follow what I'm getting at? I'm not, I don't know if I'm expecting an answer. I'm just saying, I'm trying to follow it logically in my head and it's not making sense to me.
Mayor Protembe and then Councilor Watten.
Yeah, I think I might be able to help a bit with the thinking behind the policy. So think about this, which is we set a budget. We, we we legally, legally, the city cannot exceed the budget. So what happens if things go awry and they need to spend more than what we, they, we budgeted? Answer is they come back and ask us permission to do that. What happens if they spend less? Okay. So let's say revenue comes in at exactly what they expected, but they spend less than what we told them they could. What's going to happen is you're going to have a leftover. So the question becomes what happens with the leftover? And so the policy that's in our city policies is, and it's the long policy, long time policy of this council is okay, you can spend that excess but only on one-time expenditures because it's a one-time source. It's not repeatable. So you can't go hire more employees with it. Because once it's used up, it's, we can't, we can't pay for it. So the notion behind the split that you have there is if there are one-time expenditures that are proposed to be paid for out of, it's more of a way to back into it, but I'll just say it the way I was saying it, which is if you have some one-time revenues, could be fund balance that carried over, could be as we have in this proposed budget, some one-time sources, ARPA money. So if you have some one-time sources, spend those on one-time expenditures, not ongoing expenditures. And that's the reason they've broken it out here. They've got a whole unusual set of resources and they're saying, okay, that doesn't belong in the normal ongoing revenues or expenditures, but we got to bring it to you and ask you for permission to spend it. Here's our proposal. And then we tell them yes or no. So that's kind of why they broke it out like that. Hopefully that helps.
Councilor Watten, did you want?
And then. Follow along with that line of thought is that we have the ARPA funds. It, and those are specifically for one-time use, not, not recurring. So it's, it's true then Mr. Butte, then the ARPA funds really is covering the one-time expenditures that are in the line above, the lines above. And where you're coming up with the balanced budget is revenues over and revenues under in 23 and 24, those numbers zero out in the end.
Yes.
And, and we're also going out and okay, and, and then just so that I understand it totally, we're also transferring out two and a half million for capital expenditures. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. And we do have reserves all the way through these.
We do. We're covering 15%, which is basically the grayish table that you see at the bottom under the heading reserve fund.
So there's a target and kind of hedge on either side too, right? Because we don't know exactly how much revenue is going to come in. We have a better idea of what the expenditures might be if everything's spent. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Benson, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I did. Because I had, I had a question that was along the lines of what we all are talking about with ending fund balances that I didn't fully understand and I was hoping you could explain it to me. This is my first time doing this, so forgive me if my questions are kind of elementary, but I was looking at this proposed 2023-24 biennial budget ordinance table. And it shows the, the estimated ending fund balance for 2023 and 2024. And I was noticing that in a lot of them, that fund balance goes down from 2023 to 2024, you know, and you know, it's not always a massive amount or anything like that. But then I was noticing that with the Affordable Housing Fund, it goes up. There's a, there's a larger. So anyway, my, my question was with these ending fund balances, you, you made reference to 15% keeping, keeping 15% of the total thing.
Yeah, roughly, we have different kind of reserve policies for the different funds.
They, they vary depending on the fund.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess my question is, you know, I is there a certain number of years in a row where the fund is continually going up where we say, hey, maybe we need to spend more of this, or maybe we're collecting too much for this particular fund? Or is there a time at which we say, hey, if we're collecting this and, and I mean, certainly affordable housing is something that we've said is important.
Yeah.
Um, we have a, we have a legal obligation to do something with this, with these funds rather than sit at them and, and feel comfortable about that. You know, how does, how is that determined? And if the answer is it's different with every single fund than, um, you don't have to take up the whole night.
Well, so it certainly does depend regarding the affordable. So there's a lot of context in play with each and every separate fund, which I think is important. You mentioned the Affordable Housing Fund. I know the CD committee is actually actively looking right into potentially setting up a committee, right, or commission, for example, to help figure out potentially what to do with that funding source. Right now we have an appropriation amount in here, but there's the possibility that given the recommendations that may come from that, that we would have to return to council next year, for example, with a budget amendment to reflect the proposal that they may submit to the CD committee. Right? And so that's just kind of one contextual element specific to that fund itself. Yes, we are potentially drawing down a bunch of fund balances that you see here. But a lot of this is also, you know, as the mayor pretend suggested, it is in essence to, if we have one-time sources of funding such as cash in this, which we know is available, we would then essentially match that with one-time expenditures, right, overall. And so that is a lot of our intention here as a part of this budget is to really match that cash with those one-time expenditures, but then also make sure that those one-time expenditures help us to invest where we need to for the future itself. So that hopefully it can help us to either increase our ongoing sources of revenue. Say through bringing tourists downtown through some of the capital permit projects, but also maybe like the ARP project help us to reduce the amount of work that's required overall. And therefore potentially help to create some more efficiencies inside local government so that we can get to some of the more, more of your needs overall on council. So I hope that kind of helped you a little bit. Yeah.
Councilor Lese and then Mayor Protembe.
Thank you to everyone for the explanation. These, this, this is my third time doing this. It's still hard. I, it's, you know, there's right brain, left pain brain folks, and I definitely don't fall on the side that has numbers. But now I understand because I have a savings balance and I've saved some money. So I can go ahead and buy that TV set and I can go ahead and buy that, get that, that roof fixed. I can do those things because I have a savings balance, which is my beginning fund balance. So thank you for your patience on explaining that because I'm really trying to get a handle on how that, how that works, that those can be applied to the, to the other items. Is that a fair start? It sounds like you want to say something.
I just want to hone in on your roof, right analogy for the most part. Replacing that roof is critical and we need to make sure as a city that we keep our assets in tip-top shape for the most part, because otherwise it becomes more expensive over time. We've presented some cost curves over time where if you let a road deteriorate longer than it should, for example, it becomes even more exponentially costly. If you were to let that roof leak, you'd have internal damage, right? Overall, eventually the water is going to seep through and you're going to have a lot more to replace. And that is something that as a city, we've attempted to try to prevent through budgets in the past and continue forward. A lot of you yourself, right, included the mayor pretend, council member Holloway, everyone that's here right now has been very attentive to that over time. And I think it has really benefited the city. We've attempted to create something that is highly sustainable here, and I think we're getting to that as best as possible over time. And so I just want to encourage you to keep on thinking about that analogy that you have.
Thanks for recognizing that saying the roof was not an accident. It was not an accident to say that.
Mayor Protembe.
Yeah, I, I would just offer the perspective that you all are asking precisely the right questions to start with. It is the heart of the matter is what you're getting at. What does this mean balanced budget? What do we mean by that? What's happening with these extra funds? What's going on with this fund balance here versus there? I would just make two comments regarding that. One is with regard to the the housing, the Affordable Housing Fund. The city council here took advantage of some state incentives where they said if you pass an additional tax that's restricted, it's an additional portion of the sales tax that's restricted solely for that purpose. an additional tax that's restricted, it's an additional portion of the sales tax that's restricted solely for that purpose. Basically, the state will match you on that. So we did that. We had a short time to decide yea or nay, and we decided we should do that. So we decided to start collecting that money. Now, it's not a huge amount of money in the scheme of building a housing. Uh, but it adds up over time. So one of the concepts is you can take something like that, maybe take and bond twenty years worth of that, and then you actually have an amount of money you could actually do something with. Um, so we have not yet decided as a council what we're going to do. So we have made a few small expenditures against it, but they were limited in time and amount. So we still haven't decided what we're going to do with this. This is one of the big things that Community Development Committee has been talking about for a few years. And one of the things that is all about the uh, role that Councilman Watson's taken on uh, in this regional task force. But it's all about trying to find smart ways to spend that money. Um, so uh, great question. And that's why it's building up because we actually need it to build up to where we have enough we can do something with. Um, there are a number of options as to um, you know, how we spend a bit. So that's probably a discussion for another time when we go deep on on that, but uh, that's what's going on with that fund. With regard to the general fund, uh, I just want to say this, um, one of the things that the whole budgeting team at a city does is they try to get this right. What they are really trying to do is guide us to revenues equal expenditures. You're going to miss. So what they do is they lean a little bit to where if the, if we miss, we miss in the, I'll call it the right direction. So if we miss on revenue, let's have revenue come in just a little higher than we thought it would. Because lower is a much tougher thing to deal with, and they lean into expenses just a little bit so that expenses maybe come in a little bit lower than what we approved them for. And so the net is usually we end up with a little bit leftover and it builds up. Now, I just want to make the point past not our current staff, none of our current staff, but past staff have uh, not leaned in a little bit, they've leaned into a whole bunch. And so a whole bunch of fund balance built up because we were massively underspending our revenues. My point of view is that's a really bad outcome for our taxpayers. They're paying the taxes and getting nothing, at least nothing currently. So uh, I think um, that's in the past, but that is a reason why some of this fund balance built up. So uh, but the point is, when the, as in this proposed budget, there's a proposal to take a big chunk of built-up general fund fund balance and use it on one-time purpose. What one-time purpose? Move it over to the capital fund. That's exactly what I think the city council has always intended would happen with that. So I think that's just completely consistent with where the council's been. Um, and then um, as far as looking at in those out years, and that's why I kind of poked in on it, um, Councilmember Benson, you asked a similar question that I was sort of implying to um, Mr. Butte, which is well, wait a minute, are you really, if if you really did this thing, if we really did this thing and deficit spent according to our policy, we'd actually run out of money at some point. And what this actually shows with that fund balance there, that general fund, it actually shows you when you'd run out of money. So they've actually just tried to give us that perspective. As I kind of clarified, I I said to Mr. We tape, sorry, you suggesting, you meaning you the city or the administration suggesting we would actually do that? And his answer was, no, I didn't suggest that, you know, so so it's good that we had that back and forth, but that's what's going on here.
Okay, any other comments before we head into executive session? Okay, executive session pursuant to R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I triple I to discuss litigation or legal risks of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of the litigation or legal risks is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. See attorney, attorney, Sturbank, how much time do you anticipate and who shall attend?
Thank you, Mayor. I would anticipate forty-five minutes and uh, would ask that uh, council yourself, Mr. Sour Wine, uh, Ms. Ferguson, Mr. Butte, and the two chiefs attend.
Right. And so we will, I guess, put our current session on hold. Right, and not, so we will log off. We're protesting here.
Yeah, just point of information that is this directly related to the budget? Or is this a different matter? It was directly related to the budget.
Absolutely. We reconvene at probably seven forty. So is this time for a five-minute break, maybe after the executive session and then reconvene at seven forty? So we will log out and come back at that point.
To what does council want to see changed to the proposed budget? Um, as we have kind of discussed over the next steps, we're looking to hopefully get this adopted either within the next month or early December. And so ideally, we'd like to incorporate your feedback. Uh, your vision overall for the community over the next two years within this budget. So with that said, I'd like to open it up to discussion.
Council Johnson.
Uh, if you just put up that slide of um, our, our hard decisions that we need to make. You know, the one I'm talking about.
I think I believe I do. So were you referring to these slides or I don't, I'm not actually sharing my screen, am I? There we go. Some point. Nope. Well, that was great. My apologies. I actually have to re-zoom or rejoin the Zoom meeting apparently. Okay. Yeah, I believe it's that slide that you're referring to if I'm correct.
Yeah, that and I think the next one as well.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah, could we go to the next one? Yeah, thank you.
That's what I'm.
Okay. Mr. Butte, you're showing us this slide and it, the bottom, it has the totals of one point two seven million. There's, okay, so there's two slides.
It is.
Okay.
Adds up to the total that you see below there. Yeah.
Okay. Let's see other slide. Where's, where's, okay, there we go.
Right.
Thank you.
Any questions on any particular items or?
Are we going to prioritize these?
So we have incorporated all that you see here with the, within the proposed budget. The administration did receive a number of requests from the departments above and beyond the list that you see here. The administration went through a process of prioritizing what to incorporate into the biennial budget. We had discussions with the departments themselves about what was critical um, overall, and this is what the administration decided, and that was what we've incorporated into the proposed budget. If council which is wish, wishes to engage in a prioritization process, then um, you know, we are more than happy to assist in that endeavor.
That's for Vincent.
So, so then you, you, you went through and you determined things that were most critical and things that were least critical, some of which were not included on this list.
Hmm.
Um, have you gone through the same process? Looking at the whole budget, you know, I, because you know, the conversation we're having earlier is that we don't have enough money to do what we're doing long-term. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna come up short real soon. Uh, so where do we need to start making adjustments now? Where is there is, where, where is, where is the waste? Where is the, the bleed? Where, where do we need to, you know? Um, if you guys have already gone through a prioritization, maybe you have better uh, insight to that.
So I, I think it often people look to government to say that there must be some sort of waste fraud and abuse going on.
And I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I didn't say, but you said that there were areas that were more mission critical than others, that that uh, that there were things that you didn't include in the
Apparently, the departments would maybe disagree that everything that they presented to the administration was mission critical, but we had to, within that itself, select what we thought was actually most important for this next two-year period.
How do you decide that?
Well, we've had discussions internally about things like what is the operating impact overall to us? Potentially what revenues could be generated by certain positions. We've suggested revenue manager, for example, the C I P project manager position is also slated to generate grant revenues or to support our grant needs. Um, there are other things such as we've got a stormwater um, operations fund, for example, where we may I want to use the term necessarily struggle, but we need to make sure that we comply with our N P D S permit. And so that is an overall risk that we have seen within the city where if we do not comply with that, we likely may be facing some fines over time. And so that was something that was addressed by Mike Chambliss, and that is something that you definitely see within this budget overall. I think in terms of what we hope to accomplish over the next two-year, year period, we're thinking of this Community Development Department. I've got C D staffing changes in here. We're shifting more heavily towards um, supporting or emphasizing planning as opposed to building right now at this stage, because there's potentially some more work that we have to do within that area overall, when we think of the finance and H R department. I've spoken about the lack of a deep bench here. I'm the only one up here, right? For the most part, you have seen me hour upon hour upon hour, right? For a very long time period, you're probably getting sick of me now.
No, no, it's never gonna happen. So, but it sounds like what you're saying is you've got, you've got a, a group of, of options here that are actually going to help generate revenue.
Hmm.
There, there are these other ones that could be huge liabilities if we didn't take care of them that are going to, that are, that are going to destroy it. So somewhere in the middle is where the less critical things are.
Potentially, there, there are things like little level service concerns, right, overall. And that we also have to make sure that we're addressing because we want to make sure that we protect the level of service that we're currently providing to this community. So making sure that we can recruit or retain, um, you know, public safety staff, for example, so that we can protect the numbers that we currently provide, right, to the communities overall critical, also making sure that we meet your council priorities that you addressed earlier this year. We have emphasized as a part of this overall budget, public safety, I believe, through not only a police car take-home program, but there is two hundred thousand dollars in this budget um, set aside for retention and recruitment efforts within the fire department. We also have set aside um, funding within this council contingency in case there are additional level service concerns that may require some of that funding to deploy, right, for example. So overall, got about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars kind of set aside for the most part for to protect the kind of staffing levels that we need in order to serve this community. Um, I think this is a well-thought-out biennial budget for the most part by the administration. They've been thinking hard about the issues in play at the city. We've received feedback from council since the very beginning, for example, since the retreat overall. We've identified a number of priorities or council has identified a number of parties that we've attempted to incorporate into here. And I think what you're seeing is a well-rounded budget document that addresses council's needs, the administration's input, collectively putting that together into a package here for the next two-year period.
Right, but still we're looking at going over budget, you know, over the next few years.
Well, it's, right, so I think what we talked
We gotta figure out, we have to figure out somewhere where we can
There are strategies that we have potentially deploy, right? Now we're into the future. Are we trying to solve a budget dilemma in twenty thirty?
Yeah.
Is that our intention? Is that council's intention?
Uh, do we, you know, we, we got a better chance of us of addressing it if we address it sooner rather than later, right? So if, if there's, you're, you're talking about levels of service and public safety, I think we, we are likely going to agree is incredibly important. There might be other levels of service where maybe as much as we want to have those levels of service, a choice has to be made or at least presented to the voters that that in some places, levels of service might have to go down because we can't pay for them forever. We can't, we can't, it's unsustainable, right? Um, so that's what I'm trying to drill. You know it, you know this budget way better than I do. And what I'm trying to figure out is where are we living above our means? It's like Councilmember Lasse's budget, uh, home budget uh, analogy. You know, we can have all the things that we've always enjoyed, but if all of a sudden a month of our salary is taken away by circumstance, we're going to have to make an adjustment. We're going to have to change the way that we do things. And if that means top ramen for dinner three nights a week instead of two, then we have to, we have to address that reality, right? So, so what I'm trying to figure out is from, from the guy who knows the budget better than anybody is where are those places where you know, maybe, maybe this is where we need to adjust the way we think or go to the voters and say, hey, uh, we're not getting enough revenue to continue these levels of service. Um, what do you propose? You know, one idea is increasing taxes higher than uh, we're allowed to. Um, I am, I'm agnostic on that. Uh, but, but it should be presented because we can't just, as you, that, you know, one of your first points tonight was we can't keep on living like this, right? We're gonna get, we're not going to be able to sustain it.
Councilor Lacy.
So I appreciate Councilmember Benson's comment because I think we all are focused on the future. Um, I want to, you know, and so I want to do it not in a corny way, but applaud Drew for the work he's put in on this because in the three times that I've been through the budget cycle, this is the first time the crossing of the revenue and, and expenditures has been six years out. Usually it's two or three years. Um, it's, it's typically been closer, and then we've made adjustments and pushed it out further. So looking at it at a long-term thing, that's a good thing. That's, that's what we wanted to be. But our goal and our, our not goal, our role and our responsibility is to this biennial in this, in this discussion, we have to think forward. We have to think about what the impacts are. We have to think about those things, but the real critical items are twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and, and still think and, and still look to the future. So um, I don't want to get too, I hope we don't get too hung up in what could happen in twenty thirty. Um, because I tell you what, in twenty seventeen, we never anticipated a pandemic in twenty twenty. And we pivoted and we adjusted and we revised and we survived. So I think if we can focus on twenty-three, twenty-four, still with a night of the future, we're not going to get ourselves locked into worrying about things we can't control. So.
Mayor Proton, may you?
So I got some bad news. We don't cross in six years. We don't even get through this biennial. So let me show you the basis for that. Unless you guys are prepared to do something, I'm pretty darn sure you're not willing to do. Turn with me to page eighteen. Are you prepared to raise licenses and permits forty-seven percent? I don't think you are. If you pass this budget, you will have committed yourself to doing that. Are you willing to raise charges for services twenty-two percent? Because that's what you'll be committing yourselves to do. I don't think in this year. With inflation going crazy with a a recession staring us in the face, that we're willing to do that. I have a question. I'll get an answer, but I have a question. We take this sheet. And we add up. Here's my request. Add up the far right column for the general fund, but by the way, Mr. Butte. I think the percentage increases less than you said. When I calculated it, I came up with a lesser percentage. The reason I did is I also added in, right? The risk management fund and I added in. On one thirty, I think you may have given yourself a a wrong base and made it, I think it's a lower increase than you thought, but you can chase that down. But here's what I'm. Trying to say, let's look at twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four now. We're told we've had this budget for. Weeks or months, I've had it for a couple hours cuz it keeps changing, so I I can't. Then the one I had. The total operating expenses for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I had thirty-four point nine million. Do you have that number roughly?
Thirty-four, four point nine million, where? General fund?
Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four operating expenses for the general fund.
I have a table here that says thirty-five point two.
Yeah, that's a new one I just got tonight, so I can't do this many numbers in fifteen minutes. When I did it before, so let's go with what's here. Thirty-five point two million. Now, let's add to that internal service charges seven point three million. You with me? What number do you get?
So I still have thirty-five point two, so what? You've got, what number are you looking at for the?
Thirty-five point two plus two rows to the left, seven point three. Okay, I believe those are the expenditures that would hit those funds. Is that a correct thinking?
Forty-two point five.
So then I went to this guy. Right? I'm looking across total expenditures. For twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and I added those two numbers, it's not the same number. I'm wondering, what did I do wrong?
Senator Johnson.
Uh, just to clarify, I think that what I'm seeing the difference in being is one million ish, something like a million.
Yeah, the the ones I came in tonight with was about a million six.
I think with the new numbers, it just went down slightly, but.
Okay, somewhere over a million.
Which numbers are you taking from here?
Okay, so my answer to that is I will take a look at it tomorrow. Actually, I can't tomorrow.
When you can.
Primarily because I have an ERP session all day tomorrow. So hopefully Thursday at the latest, for example, to send you a reply to this.
My fear, okay, cool. So my fear is. We got a million dollar hole. I thought it was one point five coming in tonight. That we don't realize we have. I'm very concerned about those revenue numbers. I don't think this council is gonna vote for those, so I think we should be taking those down to something we actually would be willing to do. So I've got, I've got some follow on that. I can wait my turn.
So you're talking about the license and permits? And charges for good, good service?
Right, so there's licenses and permits forty-seven percent up. Charges for goods and services twenty-two percent up. I don't think we'll be willing to raise things that much. I just don't.
Except from our TBD.
So I don't think we're, so in essence, we're not asking for a tax increase necessarily. Some of this is related to a BNO tax audit that we're proposing, comprehensive fee study, which. Indeed, council would have to approve. But then also there's a ground emergency medical transport billing too. We're hoping to accomplish as well, specifically likely in twenty twenty-four.
So I would just say I. I do budgeting for a living and I don't budget on the come. If we don't have it, you're counting, another way to say it is you don't count your chickens before they're hatched. Okay, so I don't. Think it makes any sense to put in a budget numbers that we have no idea how they would happen or whether they would happen. That's great. They're gonna do a study and try and find some money, but you don't put it in the budget yet. We haven't found it yet.
Senator Watson.
I'm I appreciate Mayor Pro Tim's. Observations, I would like to give the finance department the opportunity to respond on. On what's included in the the licensing fees and taxes. And the increase behind it. And and. Give them the opportunity since they've worked on it to respond accordingly.
I completely agree, although I would point out, we were asked to come in and ask questions about the budget. That's what I'm doing. So. I also think if you go and look at. This schedule. In twenty twenty-four, there's a row called. Charges for goods and services, it says four point one percent annual increase, but. The increase from twenty-three to twenty-four is not four point one percent. There's also a massive increases in the licenses and permit fees. I guess these big increases, I mean, it's adding. One point three million of revenue or something. I I mean, I guess these are the things I was just talking about, but these are, these are very large numbers. So I'm very worried about them. I I don't think we're actually willing to do that.
Senator Watson.
The fees that we are collecting, the sales tax in lieu of the car tab. Tax that we had previously, is that some of? The two hundred thousand.
So, so the sales tax that we're now collecting for transportation is not included in this financial forecast table.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew.
So I'm also very concerned about. The massive increases in some of these internal service charge. Internal service charges to our operating funds, so. If you look on this document. That the older one? Is you can look at the new one. I think it's gonna be similar numbers. I just. Not had a chance to look at. There's a lot of numbers on this page. If you just look across the police row, third row down. There's a column H. That is the amount that we budgeted the police department to get charged with internal service charges in. Twenty-one, twenty-two, one point eight million. You go to column M. It's a massive increase to two point six million dollars. I'm don't understand why that would be the case. There's similarly. A massive increase for the fire department from one point one million to one point six million. And then I have particular concerns about this. Down in the enterprise funds, four oh one, four oh two, four oh three. You can see there's massive increase in each of those funds in the internal service charge. So to be clear, those are charges against these funds that then appear down in the five hundred funds. I don't know why these amounts have gone up so drastically, so. What is the impact? Let's think about the enterprise funds. This means we will have to raise. Utility rates to cover that. So I'm trying to understand why I wonder some why such massive increases and what are the implications? To utility rates of those big increases, what will we have? To utility rates to cover that. That other point, but I'll wait my turn.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Could you keep going cuz I didn't see that?
So if you look across fund. One thirty-one. Affordable housing fund. There's a proposal for a massive spend of seven hundred and sixty thousand, massive to that fund anyway. I have no idea what that's for. I'd like to know what that's for before we approve it.
Is that related to uh what council member Watson's working on with the uh? Is it anticipatory to uh the affordable housing group's plan or anything like that? I don't know.
That's a good question.
So I think that was a great question. So I just want to talk about this notion of anticipatory budgeting. So I think it is our responsibility as a council to budget money for particular things. So. When I first came on council, there was a practice of the council. To appropriate the entire fund balance of every fund. Everything was appropriated. And so what that meant was administration could just spend any of the money. They didn't have to come ask us.
Seems inappropriate.
Now. What we then did and which we still have in place, which I also think is inappropriate. Is we make them come and ask us for every single expenditure above a a certain threshold. So this is kind of the model we have. Now, my view is we should move more to a model of. Know what's in the budget. Approve the budget and let the administration go do it. That's our job. We set the policy, we approve the money for it, let them go do it. I think that's the path we should be on. I think budgeting an entire fund or a significant balance out of a fund when we have no specific spending. Proposal for that money, meaning, well, we'll get to it later. That's not an appropriate thing for us to do now. Why would someone do that? Here's the thing to understand about how budgeting works in a city. In order to pass this budget, it takes a majority. To amend the budget takes a super majority. Okay, so if you're worried about getting a super majority for something, the idea is, well, let's get it now. Let's just get it appropriated and then we can. Sort of figure out the details later. I I don't know. I I don't believe in appropriating money that we don't know how it's gonna be spent. I don't think we should do that. So on fund one forty-four, if that's, is that the right number? I lose it when my eyes go across one forty, one thirty-one, sorry. I think uh unless we have a specific spending pro- a a proposal for that seven fifty-eight. That we're then approving. I don't think we should. Do that.
Senator Johnson.
Right, so then the difference between that which could be. An expenditure toward affordable housing, one would assume, uh, and um. And the CIP is that the CIP lists out the specific things and how much. Is supposed to be spent on them, whereas this would just be a blanket expenditure on something that we don't know what it is. Is that the idea that that's kind of the difference between a CIP and which is covered under? Three ten, yeah, nonutility capital fund um versus. Fund one thirty-one, but that's kind of like the difference. Am I understanding correctly? Yeah, I'll say it again. Okay, so the difference between philosophically speaking, the difference between. Appropriating fund one thirty-one and uh fund three ten is the fund. Three ten is all kind of listed out in the CIP. Right here. We know exactly what it is that we would be spending, whereas fun. One thirty-one is doesn't have a list of where are the projects that we're actually spending that money on. Is that philosophically the difference between the two?
Senator Benson.
Go to go to Jim for or the council.
I, yes, that is my uh point of view, exactly what you just said. I would say. Because you have. There's an interesting question about how we appropriate capital funds. There are different ways to do that. The way we have operated. Is that we. We have this, so actually, let me back up. The city's come a long way. Uh, this is the first time I've ever seen, and I believe it's the first time it has ever happened. That the budget, that capital budget is being presented to us as a integral component of a six year CIP that is also current. I think that is a, I'm just so thrilled that that has happened. I think that's how it should be done. But the important thing to realize is the way this budget ordinance is written, there are other ways to do this. I'm very much of two minds, my point of view on this. I'm so. Supportive of what's happened that I. But here, here's the thing, as this budget ordinance is written, you need to understand. It doesn't authorize those projects. It doesn't require those projects. It has a dollar amount that is appropriated and it can be spent on anything, any capital item. Now, remember that part where I said they can't spend anything without coming and asking project by project? So that backs up and says, well, actually, no, they can't. They can only spend it. So there is a mechanism for us to sit to hold them to the CIP. Um, it's not a good mechanism. We should do what most cities do, which is actually. Budget the projects and let them go do the projects. Come back to us, ask for more permission, come back. I don't like that, but I'll tell you what. I wouldn't pick that. I'm not gonna pick that fight this year. I think there's a specific list. So fine, but uh there is, the reason I brought that up is you asked the difference between three ten and this. You said is the difference that there's a specific list. I just want to point out, they're actually not held to that list. Although we can hold them to that list when they come for approval, but. Actually, you know, that's what's happened there. So but you're right, in the case of the one I'm pointing out, there's not even a list of what the projects would be.
Senator Benson.
Um, I think that something that might might help me, and maybe this already exists, and I just haven't come across it yet, is an an explanation of. The ending fund balance and what it's for. You know, you talked about with some of them, there's a certain percentage that we have to retain. Um, I assume for contingencies or whatever, and then with others that we're actually waiting to accumulate. You know, like the affordable housing one, we're we're waiting to accumulate enough funds so that we can execute a project, but. Uh, is there a a a detailed? Definition of what each ending fund balance is meant to do?
definition of what each ending fund balance is meant to do? And is that something that the council could do to maybe better articulate what our goals are with an ending fund balance? If it is beyond the minimum levels needed for contingencies or emergencies, you know, what are we building these ending bun- fund balances for? If they are accumulative and to what point and until we get to where? Maybe, maybe we need to maybe that already exists and I've missed it. I, I.
Well, which manager, do you, did you have any comments regarding his question?
Well, I think right now we're just taking questions from council, so.
Okay. Rep. Tim Mayhew and then Councilor Watson.
I think that the question you just asked is exactly what they've been trying to very much move to an answer on. So there's a detailed answer to your question, but I have a suspicion possibly that a high level answer may be what you're looking for. So here's here's a way to help you. Look at all the three hundred funds. Those are all capital funds. Broadly, here's the thing to know, all of that money is restricted or designated by us, the council, to be used on capital only. So there's individual funds, but here's the deal. What they've done is come back and said, you know, a lot of those are old funds. You're not really using it for that purpose. They said, tell you, why don't we simplify this? They put it all down into one fund, three ten. And then what they did is they gave us a six-year CIP, which matches that, which explains that number. So they've actually mapped it and said, your CIP, these items on the CIP matches into that guy. So they've said, you want to know what the fund balance is for? Look at the CIP. So they've tried to help us in that regard. Go up to all the funds down to total general fund, just below oh oh five. The fund balance for all those funds is essentially supposed to be zero, but not zero because we leave some money in there. Why? Because we collect taxes, but they only pay, the state only pays them over to us every three or six months. So we're going to have some cash flow in there, right? So there's a little bit of fund balance you need there just to operate. And as they've laid out in the budget document, they've put a little bit of cushion in there in case something goes wrong. And then, but generally, fund balances down to oh five are intended. Make sure I lost track of that reserve fund. Where's the reserve fund? What fund number?
Zero zero two.
Zero, with the exception of zero zero two. Zero zero two is something our policy specifically says, fund a minimum and a maximum, just in case something really bad happens. So and that's set aside and we fund it and it sits there for a rain for a bad day. So by policy, they've set that and that's fund two, but the others just go to zero over time, but not exactly leave some operating money in there. And then when they build up, because of what I described earlier, sort of a little bit conservative on things, then we use them for one-time purposes, and that's part of the fund transfer that's proposed here to move some of that to capital funds down to three ten. So that gives you all the way down to five. Eleven through twenty, these are not enormous balances, but they're kind of explained by their name. So that probably you can probably look at the name and spot the fund balance and it'll make sense to you. As I said, all the, oh, and then all the one hundreds, similar deal. Those are all funds where revenue comes to us with restrictions, so they count for it separately and it's used specifically for those purposes. So you can kind of figure it out from the name. The two hundreds there are funds we have to have by bond to fund, they fund or they're required by our bond agreements. Alright, so now you got every, you got the down to five, you got down to twenty. You got all the one hundreds, you got the two hundreds, and you got the three hundreds. Four hundreds, those are our utility funds. So the fund balances are, so two things happen in those funds. They're different than the other ones. Capital expenditures over time and the operations. So why does a fund balance build up? For those capital projects that are going to happen in utilities. So it's kind of you look at the name of the fund, you can kind of, the fund balance will make sense. And you can go look at the CIP and see what are those projects. And then you got the five hundreds, which are those revolving funds, although the five hundreds are the ones I've just questioned, how much is going in there? Why has it changed so much since before? So hopefully that's helpful. Mr. Mutek can give you detailed answers for any of this, but that's sort of how I look at it, big picture.
So Director of Finance Ferguson has some comments regarding that.
In your budget book, Ian Appendix A six, you'll see financial management policy. This is proposed policy that the F and A committee has been working on, and this is updated policy. Find a section A six. I want to bring you to section, starting with section two, and Mayor Potem was giving, you know, that this should also assist with what's the purpose of fund balance? And so what I wanted to bring to your attention is it's page four of the new policy, but reserve target level and fund balance. And what he was describing is that there is the that range fifteen to twenty percent of expenditures, and that is in that fund zero zero two. That is a was a consolidation of multiple contingency funds or reserve funds. But we cleaned up policy so that it was very clear that this is outside of the general fund. This is for emergencies and it provides for a description on on what those funds would be used. Our, our, our cash flow in the general fund, that fund balance is bringing back to council member Lasse's issue about him being able to buy a TV or his roof problem. So nonetheless, if it was a TV that it was, was a, is a one-time expense because we needed to up his level of service and he needed to be able to watch TV on a bigger screen, you know, that that's a decision one time. His roof problem was something he might dip into the reserve fund. Council approved to go do that because he's got a major problem of of some sort.
Yeah, I moved that we let him do the roof, but.
Yeah, I agree. So the other thing is that I also want to, just to give the council, is that there's some definitions in policy. And we specifically did that. So you could see in the enterprise funds, the way that we have proposed the budget is that we wanted to ensure that we have we, we were covering our debt, so we need to have a level of of reserve. Our operating and emergency reserve, we want to make sure that we've got a fund balance of some operating days. The other thing, just for you, just for you to, for some light reading, is that in special revenue funds, capital project funds, the nature of those funds is spend that money. And that is in that, in the capital project scenario, that's where you can find some other backup information about that. Also want to point out, section two point five, two point six talks about what the council will do should fund balance go over, and you've got, you've got extra. You're, you're going to strive to re, you know, regain the minute, the minimum threshold if something happens. If there's excess, you're going to determine, and it, and in policy, it says you're likely going to spend on that capital assets. Unless there is some other decision of the council that want what you made. So when it comes to reserves, why is there a fund balance? Why are there reserves right here is where you can get some light reading.
Thank you.
So it comes to be about eight minutes left, unless you want to extend the time past nine. There any last wrap-up comments and we should talk about what the next steps are? It looks like November seventh and eighth, you're reviewing budget at the committee level again. November fourteenth, during council meeting, we review of the final, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four binding of budget, presentation, a review of the twenty twenty-three property tax levy. There'll be public hearings, revenue sources, property, property tax and preliminary budget. And that day, we do not have a round table, so we could add round table if we need additional time for that. As well as we could also add for November fifteenth. And then November twenty eighth, we have the adoption of the final binding of budget. The property tax levy and also the public hearing of the final budget. Rep. Tim Mayhew.
Yeah, so what I didn't bring up, partly because we're out of time, partly because I'm really tired, is I'm very concerned about what's in these numbers all over the place, which is assumptions about compensation rates, particularly for the unions. That is, we are not going to be able to settle those union contracts for the rates that we've put in here. We have severely under budgeted for labor, and if we go through with that on our budget, a year from now, we're going to be in a heck of a pickle. Because we're going to have to cut all kinds of things to fund whatever happens. So I think we've got to look at that and figure out if we've just got way higher expenses than we think. Because we really didn't factor in the right percentages for those. So why do I bring that up now? Is the mayor trying to kind of get us wrapped up? Just I am worried that we don't have enough meetings together as a council to get through this stuff. And my thought is next week, maybe we find a way to either postpone some of our committee meetings and substitute in a council meeting instead. So we can get through, I want to get done on time. I think you guys do too, but I think I'm really worried we're going to run out of time and really be in a pickle.
So we do have the option for, again, the fourteenth, you can have a round table before it. And then fifteenth, you can do another workshop or special workshop. And that could be three hours.
Could you just repeat?
So, so the fourteenth, so is the council meeting? And we could do a round table for an hour before that. And that's also when we're still, you know, at that point, we have a public hearing that evening, things like that. And then we could do a workshop on the fifteenth from six to nine.
So I'm in favor of both of those things that the mayor just mentioned, but I, I also am in favor of us. So I just lobbed a whole bunch of stuff. You guys heard me. I just lobbed a whole bunch of stuff at Drew. With enough time, he's going to come back with stone cold good answers on that stuff. We've got to give him time. So I'm just worried about getting too late into the month. So my own views, we ought to take the mayor up on both of those suggestions he thought maybe we should think about. I think we should do both. And I also think we should find a way to have a meeting next week in lieu of some of those committee meetings. Let's try and find a way to do that.
That's what I say.
I like the idea of having substituting a committee meeting for a council meeting, even if, you know, it's an hour and a half of time, makes a big difference. I'm not the chair of the community development committee, but I don't think we have heavy and pressing items like some of the other committees might have currently on the agenda. We could have you know, and with enough time now, we had could notice that that is a, it's already noticed as a committee of the whole. But it could be noticed as a council roundtable from six to seven thirty. As a proposal. That's on Monday. Similar time to a normal council meeting. Doesn't, I don't think we want to interrupt F and A. I think that's something that we have to have to for council agendas. Public safety, I think you guys have something on there. You're still going through. If I remember from last time, but we might be messing it up. I guess we push that. Yeah, we do. You could push it for the council.
This is all F.
Yeah, so we could. We could take both, though, if the council's in agreement with that, we could take cancel both the public safety and the community development and get a good couple of hours of time on the budget. That's also in Drew's, Drew's world, two business days of this week to work on. As you've got, as you've mentioned, you are busy tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, the finance and HR department is going to be critically busy with the ERP project moving forward. Fortunately, I'm probably a leg of that three stool that we have for the most part. So the question is, what do we do about workload in this department? Really, we're looking to counsel for solutions. Often, I think we've described level of service concerns, right? Overall, finance and HR department certainly does feel that on a daily basis. I often think council solution is that employees just need to be more productive. I would ask you to consider what is important to council moving here forward to the end of the year so that we can focus on that.
I just want to second what Drew said. Council needs to understand, and we've talked about this in some of the committees, that there were a number of additional positions that were requested by different departments. And we prioritize positions that are going to benefit the organization as a whole, as opposed to benefiting individual departments. We give you a specific example. I was lobbying to hire a deputy city clerk. But that's something that's going to make my life easier as opposed to the organization as a whole. And that's why we accented these positions in the finance department, because we know that's going to benefit everybody.
Councilor Benson.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you, if, if we're missing that, it's oblivion, at least on my part, not, not not thinking you're being productive enough. I can't believe how productive you are. So I, I think y'all, y'all are doing amazing job. So please don't think that we think you're just eating bonbons back there, because we don't. We see what you've done. I, I think Mayor Protem Mayhew has made clear that what we're looking at is monumental in the history of the city. It's certainly the best one I've seen in the history of the city. And so, you know, please don't think that we don't think you're working. We, we appreciate it. And if we ask for, for more and, you know, if you have a suggestion, was there something, you know?
I just want to make sure that we continue to foster a collaborative relationship with council.
Yeah.
I think in some cases, we do entertain a number of gotcha questions overall from here at the podium, which I don't think is productive at all. And so moving forward, I hope we can continue to build collaboratively between us, between council and staff. I think that's going to be important for the health of this organization.
I, I, I I can tell you that from position one, there is no expectation for perfection and the the alacrity you have shown in hitting perfection almost all the time is pretty incredible. So if there's a question that doesn't have an answer, I don't see it as a gotcha question. I see it as a, you know, you're doing the job of four people and if on occasion you can only do the job of three point nine five, that doesn't make you substandard. We all think you're incredible, alright? And nobody got you tonight. Just so, so you know, we think you're doing a fantastic job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And that really goes to the entire finance and HR.
Totally, totally, absolutely.
As well as the administration and some of the public safety staff behind me here today, right?
I don't think, I don't think anybody thinks they got you tonight. Nobody, nobody feels that way at all. Okay. We are all on your side and we appreciate that you're on ours.
So if we it seems like Monday and Tuesday would be too soon, but I but he's taken a number of questions that we can respond back to you through the question matrix and then still have the workshop on the fourteenth and fifteenth. Does that work?
We will do what we can.
Rep. Tim Mayhew.
Yeah, no, no, I, I completely agree with that. The, the thing I was worried about is getting any more questions that are there to him so that he has time to work through those questions. I'm just worried about like waiting to the fifteenth and saying, oh, by the way, here's a new set of questions. That's what I'm trying to avoid doing to him.
Councilor Say.
Yeah, that's what I was, it's, that's what I was proposing was not a Drew, come back to us with answers. It was, you've got two days of it worked ahead of you. You got one workshop that you have to go to. That's not enough time. You know, you can do some research on some of those things, but I don't think we ended, we, we've run out of time. We You know, you can do some research on some of those things, but I don't think we ended, we, we've run out of time. We haven't stopped asking questions. So if I could, uh, put it in the form of a motion, uh, move that we cancel public safety and community development committees next week and post notice for a council round table uh, from six to nine PM on Monday. What day is that? November seven?
Second.
This been moved by Councilor Say, second by Mayor Proton Mayhew to cancel two council committees and hold a workshop six to nine.
I have to modify that because I think we have, um, planning to, planning commission that night. So it would be from six to seven thirty. If that amendment is okay.
Well, if you're canceling public safety, wouldn't you go five to?
To that.
And thirty.
Yeah, five to seven thirty.
Second.
Modified.
Council Christian.
I was just going to say I will be catching a flight that evening, so, um, I, I can attend, but I may have to drop off and return from the car.
Rep. Timmy.
Yeah, in, in light and in response to Mr. Bute's comments, to be clear, I think that the sole purpose of that meeting is for us to ask questions. We would not expect responses. It's a, the goal is to have all questions now asked and captured so that finance department knows what they, we need, they need to come back with. The purpose is not to ask for responses from them would be my point of view.
Council Watten.
Given the limited amount of time that we have and the, and, and knowing that the work that the finance department and administration are doing, I would prefer members of the council directing those questions um, to the finance department and give them a full two weeks to respond to those questions.
Senator Say.
Appreciate what Councilor Watten suggesting. Um, I think we all have the opportunity to ask those questions at any time. Um, I think what this opportunity for this meeting is, is so we can be together also and ask and bounce those, those questions off each other. So we can refine them. And, and answer some of them ourselves or, or clarify things. I think that's what was useful about tonight was hey, look at this page. Hey, look at that page. Follow, connect the dots and those sorts of things. So if you have questions, obviously any one of us can ask a question of the, of the finance department. I accept utmost confidence that they would record that question and, and, and move forward with it with council at the appropriate time. Um, this is so that we can have that time as a council also to, again, have, have continued. Do you want to call it deliberations? But I think it's more discussion and understanding.
Council Benson.
Yeah, I, I totally, I, for me, reading this thing is like eating an elephant and I, you know, learned so much just from hearing from everybody tonight. So I appreciate the patience, but yeah, the, the group discussion is incredibly helpful for me.
I think would be helpful if you have questions, they send them to them so that they can look at it and be prepared to respond to some of them. It's more difficult. Point out a number and saying, why is that so high? Well, we, we will get back to you on that, but perhaps if you email us that question in advance, we can come and tell you what it is, why, why it is forty-seven percent or whatever. So Director of Finance, can you tell us, how does this work? Next week, is that too soon or what works best in the schedule? Cause they're the ones that are doing the work.
Thank you, Mayor. So the questions are, are wonderful. We, we appreciate those questions in advance is always uh, appreciated, even if you want to ask the question during the next, uh, council meeting. Um, ask that question, but we may be able to provide and be prepared, uh, with, with an answer to that. Now that being said, the, the council's questions and the dialogue, uh, i- is very important. We also want the council from a deliberation standpoint to let us know if you're interested in keeping something in the budget that we have proposed or not. And that's the conversation that, that tonight there has been some with regards to the council having that conversation. Do I like this, this, this position is, is included in here? And i- if you under, if you have all your questions answered about what's in that proposal, then that's for the council to say, uh, I'm interested in that. I'm not interested in that. That helps us to understand where the council is leaning with regards to, do you want to keep, keep that particular item in or not? So the questions are good, but it's also if you, if you have that conversation between yourselves with regards to I want to keep something in the budget, you're missing something in the budget, or let's take something out, uh, in order for us to get farther uh, uh, down the road, so to speak, and, and we have a budget, uh, that you're, uh, ready to adopt. So. Questions, if they can come sooner, uh, help.
So, Senator, should we vote on the motion? So the motion is to cancel the two as a committees and then have the, have a workshop Monday from five to seven thirty. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
There is four, five, two, one.
We're going to be here for part of it anyway.
Senator Watten voting no. So then round table on the fourteenth. And should we schedule the special, another special workshop for the fifteenth? Rep. Timmy.
Move that we schedule a special workshop for the fifteenth and that we schedule a round table prior to the council meeting on the fourteenth.
Right, okay.
Second.
This move by Mayor Proton Mayhew, second by Councilor Watten. So the winner round table for the council meeting on November fourteenth and then a special workshop on the fifteenth. Any discussion? That's what I'm saying.
Um, I request a excused absence on the fifteenth. I have a client in town that I have, uh, already scheduled activities.
Maybe we will know them.
Nay.
Happy to be here.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. It's unanimous, so that is.
Do we vote on the excused absence now or?
I may, if it can be tempered, I may be able to make it by eight.
Well, any other discussion? Otherwise it's nine eleven. Senator Johnson.
Uh, I was just curious. I, I don't remember if we voted on, uh, excusing Councilmember Holloway tonight.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Okay.
Cause we were doing Holloway.
We did not excuse Lasey.
I don't know if we voted or not. Thank you.
We didn't think of it. Okay. Um, I guess they're ready to adjourn. Any motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second. Move by Councilor Watten, second by Senator Christian to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, Councilor Benson voted nay to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Just can't get enough.
A lot of work. Thank you.
Form of one.